Our point is going to go through those requirements.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Lynda Drake. I'm the Director of Career and College Readiness Initiatives. And in this briefing, I'll go over the current graduation requirement emergency waiver. It's sometimes referred to in the short form as the GREU waiver or the GREU. Just to remind you, the waiver deals with two parts of the high school diploma, the credit and subject area requirements and the graduation pathway options. Those two parts of the diploma along with the high school beyond plan are intended to work together to fulfill the purpose of the high school diploma, which is to declare a student is ready for success in post-secondary education, gain full employment, civic engagement, and lifelong learning. And even with the waiver, that was the always the intent was that that purpose would remain even with the waiver. This is just an overview of the framework of the credit and subject area requirements. We have seventeen foundational or core credits and seven elective credits. These are the college academic distribution requirements, what is required for minute admission to our state universities, and they are not officially part of graduation requirements, but they do figure into the waiver because one of the one of the waiver is supposed to, when it comes to considering what can be waived, it's supposed to be credits and subject areas that are furthest from what the student wants to do after high school. So the four credits or the caters would want to be preserved as if possible when it comes to considerations of what can be waived. This is a list of things that my colleagues at OSPI put together, but it's a it's a useful list of of policies that permit some flexibility to allow for credit recovery and completion. These are supposed to be considered first, and and all districts are supposed to engage in activities that allowed students to recover credit prior to considering whether or not to grant a waiver to a student. There's it includes mastery-based learning or competency-based crediting, comparable course content substitutions for students who receive special education services, CTE equivalencies, other credit recovery options are are described in some of OSPI's guidance material. And there are also local waivers and excusals. Local districts can waive on their own any local graduation requirements. Two credit waivers to a credit of two credit, a waiver of two credits is available as part of the framework of the twenty-four credit graduation requirements that and those are administered and granted locally. It's two credits waive only for elective non-core credits. And then there are some flexibility around Washington State History Physical Education as well as local requirements. So under this year's graduation requirement emergency waiver, one credit can be waived and it can be either a flexible credit or a core credit. Students must earn a total of at least twenty-one credits by August thirty-first. The way the waiver, the legislation that that authorized the waiver says that the waiver must be granted the same year in which the student graduates. What and in effect, that means that the waiver is administered year by year, school year by school year. It's unlike other waivers that sometimes follow the student, even if they take longer to graduate than their cohort. This this waiver ends each year and starts up the next year. So this is the last year of the waiver, but students who've attempted to graduate last year and did not are under and sort of a new waiver this year. I know that's a little confusing, but essentially what that means is that students have to complete all graduation requirements with the waiver by August thirty-first, or they stop having the waiver available to them. And then what was new this year was that the graduation pathway requirement was not available. Past years of the emergency waiver, credits could be waived and the graduation pathway could be waived. Before the use of the waiver, districts should consider other of their existing authorities to support students to graduation without the use of the waiver. So it is the district's responsibility to provide a good faith effort to help students meet graduation requirements prior to consideration of granting the waiver. They're also responsible for communicating responsibly with students and parents, and then advising students of any potential benefits or limitations of using the waiver. Limitations include, you know, not meeting those for academic distribution requirements. So it could affect students' admission to a four-year college if if some of those cater credits are waived. So student eligibility for the waiver, they need to have been reasonably expected to graduate the year that the waiver is granted. They need to have demonstrated some post-secondary preparation, and they need to have experienced significant disruption to their ability to complete graduation requirements due to the COVID emergency. In past years, we had a provision that allowed students who want to graduate early. These are students accelerated. There's always some students that do want to graduate early. In past years, those students were required to meet all of the credit and subject area requirements for their cohort by August thirty-first, and then they could use the the emergency waiver to waive the pathway. That was in past years. This year, there is no there is no waiver of the pathway currently. So the current year emergency waiver doesn't apply to students who want to graduate early. So just to recap, the appropriate use of the waiver includes four conditions. All four conditions must be met. That is that the student's ability to complete graduation requirements was impeded by the emergency, by the COVID emergency. Second, that the school district has demonstrated a good faith effort to support the students in meeting all graduation requirements prior to considering the emergency waiver. Third, that the student was reasonably expected to graduate in the school year when the emergency waiver is granted. And finally, that the student has demonstrated skills and knowledge indicating that they're prepared for their next steps that they want to do after high school. Now, we've heard a lot from educators that would really like to have a waiver of pathways this year. And I think that there are students who would benefit from the waiver this year. But we did also hear a lot of examples of real problems that educators are finding challenging. But some of these real problems are not what the waiver was designed and intended to address, and that other policies would need to be put in place or used to help support students to meeting graduation requirements. So some of these include access problems, scheduling and timing. There's some frustration because there are flexibilities that were available in the past that are no longer available, such as testing, different testing alternatives. One thing we've heard is there's been a tendency to kind of relate the new performance-based pathway that is coming on board to the emergency waiver going on, going away. And they're really unrelated. As you know, the board has tried to enact or tried to get the legislature to pass legislation that expanded pathway options for several years. And this last year, they succeeded and got the performance-based pathway, but that actually is coincidental to the emergency waiver going away. Some educators simply don't like the concept of pathways. There are students who simply are not ready to graduate and don't and haven't shown readiness. And there are students who are not on track to meet a pathway because they've transferred in from out of state. They're highly mobile. They're multi-language learners. They haven't been able to get on track to meet a pathway. And these are all really real problems that affect real students, but it may not be appropriate to the use the emergency waiver to address some of these issues. This is a timeline of rulemaking. If the board does decide to move forward with rulemaking, today will be the discussion and consideration of approval of proposed rules. There would be a hearing in March, and then, as Randy mentioned, the board could consider adoption in April or at and at a special board meeting. The actual dates constraining us is from from the Office of the Register, and those dates are in the box there. Alright, so I think that completes the my briefing on the emergency waiver. Randy, would you like me to pull up the the exhibit showing the actual rules?
Yeah, let's let's talk about what the rules as drafted by staff went to. Yeah.
So this is in your board packet, and it's a relatively short proposed rules. The only amendment to the rules is shown there in underline. It's changing the year from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four so that students could use a waiver of pathways this year. And then we added a provision that the district may waive a graduation pathway option in English Language Arts or Math. If the student has as being this, the district may not waive a graduation pathway option in English Language Arts or Math if the student received a waiver of credit in the same subject area. So this, in effect, allows a waiver of pathways for students who graduate in twenty twenty-four, but you can't waive a pathway in English if there's already been a credit waiver in English or in math, if there's already been a credit waiver in math.
I would just add that this provision, staff, if you move forward, staff are recommending this addition because we were hearing on the one hand, there absolutely is room for this for some students, and on the other hand, there's a real concern about readiness and demonstration of readiness. And so that the meeting one or the other provides additional assurance that students have met those requirements.
Lynda, Randy, is there anything you wanted to add?
Yes, sorry, I muted. Yeah, so I think we could take some clarifying questions now from members. We only have a couple of minutes before public comment.
Right, and if any member of the board has a clarifying question, we do have a couple of minutes before our six o'clock scheduled time for public comment. If you would please use the raise hand function and we'll call on you. And I see Arium has his hand up. Arium?
Yeah. Not to get too hung up on semantics, but that concept of readiness, who defines what readiness is? And the criteria for such a thing?
Essentially, we do in a sense, because we're the ones that establish the scores that students need to meet on a variety of different assessments. And then we also establish the requirements, but it's it's in it's in conjunction with what OSPI is all around adopting the learning standards. And so the credit requirements, for example, three credits of math is required. In order to earn the credit, according to our rule, a student has to demonstrate that they've met the standards. Similarly, we set the score on S back, for example, or SAT that would demonstrate readiness in that same subject matter. So that that and so what I was trying to get at is that there really are two different things we're looking at in our current graduation framework to demonstrate readiness in those subject areas, both completion of credit and the pathway requirement. And what this rule would say is that you have to demonstrate it in one or the other of those two pieces.
Ron?
Oh, yeah. And there is some additional readiness criteria that can be used as part of waiver too. So so students have to demonstrate, for example, where they could be admitted to post-secondary year of education, have scholarship, and a variety of other ways that they can demonstrate readiness in addition to what I just said.
Ron, go ahead.
If a junior decided to apply for waiving, let's say, given a waiver for a math class, over the summer becomes smart at math and decide they want to actually take that class, is that allowed?
Yeah, actually, a junior could not receive this particular waiver. And so right, unless unless that's junior junior had enough credit accumulated, they would be expected to graduate this year.
Okay.
Which case you're not really a junior, but after further cavity audit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into our public comment time period. And Stephanie will be promoting you when your name is, when you're come up in order. Your name will be called and you're going to be promoted to a panelist and you have the ability to use your camera or not if you'd like to. But you will be unmuted so that we can hear you. And just as a reminder, just a couple of things related to public comment. This period of the board meeting is a limited public forum, and comments from members of the public are accepted on current agenda items or matters under the authority of the board. Please be concise and respectful in your comments. We do want to hear from as many people as possible. And so we do ask if you hear another point that you were planning to make mention, please take that into account in your statements. And given the number that we have, Stephanie, could you please confirm? I believe there are eight people signed up at this point. Is that correct?
We do. We have eight people.
Okay, so given the number of people that we have, there will be two minutes allowed per person. And so that we can try to get, so that we will be able to get through everyone's comments who have signed up. And we do ask that that you honor this. There will be a timer that will be going on as you are speaking. You may also submit your public comments in writing to the board at sbe.k12.wa.us. So with that, as an introduction, Stephanie, would you please call the first person? And we're looking forward to you sharing with us.
Sure, Lilia, whenever you're ready.
My name is Lilia Weso. I'm the School Counselor, Muscles Lake High School, and the Washington School Counselor Association High School Vice President. For the last five years, I was the migratory multilingual school counselor during COVID nineteen, a migratory Our migratory students had to help their families by working, babysitting, or other responsibilities at home. Additionally, they also needed to work on their schoolwork, even though they didn't completely understand the curriculum or how to submit their homework. Our MEP families did not understand how they can help or support their students or how to submit their students attendance. At the same time, families had to work on long hours in the fields because they still needed to provide for their students. Many MEP families don't have an education background to support or guide their students or additional income sources or to hire a tutor. Their graduation requirement emergency waiver program gives hope to the students to accomplish milestones because most of the students are first generation. Without the group, it affects the mental health of the students, and they will shut down and stop attending school if they learn or realize that they are not on track to graduate with their class. The graduation pathway must also include, be included in the group. Many of our, many of your migratory multilingual students did not have time or the monetary resources to complete the CTE because of the school offering or room in their schools. The same goes to the test, like the SAT or the ACT. And and the performance-based graduation pathway option is not yet available in their schools. It will be fair, it will be fair inequality if we give the opportunity to the class of twenty twenty-four to qualify to graduation requirement waiver. This is impact many students in meaningful ways by continuing to give hope to the students, providing students an opportunity to be successful and reduce barriers that were further exacerbated during COVID nineteen. First-generation students to graduate. There are many students that indicated that it's only takes, there's, there's are many studies that indicated that it only takes one family member to change the future of the families. I support the draft rule language as proposed. I would also like to acknowledge the board's responsive work on this and appreciated their time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, would you, we appreciate your your comments. Stephanie, would you please call the next person up?
Sure, Marin, whenever you're ready.
Hello. Washington State Board of Education. My name is Marin Marks, and I'm the current Washington School Counselor Association President-elect. I serve as a public high school counselor in Washington and Southwest Washington. And I'm here to represent my organization in support of the inclusion of the graduation pathway within the graduation requirements emergency waiver, also referred to as GREU for the class of two thousand twenty-four. In October, the WASCA board met and unanimously voted to support the inclusion of the graduation pathway requirement to the existing GREU for the class of two thousand twenty-four. WASCA surveyed our members in November, and results came back representing over seventy school districts represented in our state. And these school counselors shared that they have students this year within these seventy school districts that will not receive a high school diploma unless there's an option to waive the graduation pathway requirement. The majority of students in our state will most likely meet this graduation requirement, and our schools and school counselors are working diligently to ensure that these students have met this requirement and have a meaningful connection with their high school and beyond plan. However, there's a small number of students being impacted by unique circumstances, and those students ethically should have the opportunity to have the graduation pathway waived like other impacted students in the past few years. In my own experience as a school counselor, I've utilized the graduation pathway option on the GREU each year available. For example, last June, one of my students who had been moved from Hawaii to rural Washington to Southwest Washington was able to earn a high school diploma and is now a constructive and productive member in my own community. And he would not be there without the inclusion of the graduation pathway of the GREU. Many students who have not yet met this graduation pathway similar to him include those who have already endured tremendous difficulties throughout the pandemic and now in our current economic state. In addition, we have students that have limited availability of other pathways, including AP college and the high school classes as well as CT offerings that lead to a pathway. We also do have disparities throughout our state with testing opportunities for the ASVAB SAT and ACT as well as funding to administer those tests. Please do not deny any students who have met other graduation requirements, including a meaningful high school and beyond plan, to have their chance to walk across the graduation ceremony stage and to earn a Washington high school diploma. Please vote yes for the inclusion of the graduation pathway to the GREU for the class of two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. I need to just check really quickly. Ms. Wood, do you have a question?
Yes, I, yes, I just had a clarifying question for Linda, which was this, if I understand this correctly, this waiver could be used to allow somebody to graduate early. So like if a junior was ready but not quite, then they could use it to graduate early, or they could stay and be a senior and meet all the requirements.
Should I go ahead and answer or wait till after public?
Why don't we, this will give you time to think, because after we have public comment, Patty, the board is going to have some discussion. Would that be okay? We wait till after that. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Marks. Stephanie, the next person, please.
Next, we have Mark.
Hi, my name is Mark Martinez. I'm the president of the Washington Digital Public School Alliance. We're a organization that represents students in the multitude of public online schools throughout Washington State. And we are from east to west and north to south in the state. Our students are all over the place. I want to, on behalf of the organization, I want to support this this extension of of the waiver. Specifically, few things I really want to talk about is, you know, we have a lot of students in online schools who have IEPs who maybe aren't going to meet either the English or the requirement mandates. And as many of you know, things, things like the CTE classes are, how shall I say, unequally distributed across the across the state. And so a student in a particular area may or may not have access to different CTE classes. And if if any, if you guys know anything about students, you know, the first thing that they decide about making a decision on taking a CTE course is they take the class and then they say they don't like it and they don't want to go down that pathway anymore. And if no other classes are of courses in that, in a different CTE class that they're interested in are available in their school, they're really limited in their options. Specifically, like I said, if they have an IEP and aren't going to go, aren't on a college-bound pathways, their only real other alternative is is the ASVAB. And as a ten-year, two-tour Iraq veteran, you know, I really support kids who want to go join the military as a as an option. But I don't want that to be the requirement for students to 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 graduate if they're not college-bound and their school doesn't offer them the level or the different options of CTE classes that are required to graduate. So I really, on behalf of the DPSA, again, we really support this option, the extension of this waiver. I would even honestly, I really wish I would go further than twenty twenty-four until we can get some better language for students to be able to graduate and stay in their cohort of of fellow classmates. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate you making time to share with us. Stephanie, next person, please.
Next, we have Holly.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Holly Ferguson. I'm the Chief Policy and Strategy Officer for Highline Public Schools. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. I first want to start out by thanking the state board and the staff for being so incredibly nimble and forward-thinking when the pandemic hit. When everything shut down in March of twenty twenty, our first thoughts were obviously for our students and especially our seniors, knowing that they only had a few months to get those graduation requirements met. You all came through as quickly as you did with emergency rules, allowing waivers, along with clear guidance and expectations for what would be required. That was amazing. There are many students in Highline who have your actions to thank for their graduations. So thank you for that. I am here today to request the graduation pathway waiver be extended for one more year. Highline absolutely agrees with the new criteria that no pathway waiver can be granted if there is also a core credit waiver. And we think that is a fundamental fundamentally important addition for accountability purposes to ensure readiness for students. So we agree with that. We are requesting an extension for a couple of reasons. The first one being that this year's seniors did not start ninth grade auspiciously. They started, in many cases, fully remote. That meant that they didn't necessarily have the full panoply of courses that might be offered or the full attention of counselors who could really start them out from day one, thinking about all the pathway options that they might want to consider. Second of all, and Linda mentioned this in her comments, we agree that the performance-based pathway is separate from the waivers. Second of all, and Linda mentioned this in her comments, we agree that the performance based pathway is separate from the waivers. However, we do think that the performance based pathway is an important option for many students who who may have difficulty going down the more traditional route. And by extending this waiver for one more year, you allow districts to get the policy infrastructure in place um, to allow that performance based pathway to, um, to come into place for districts. Uh, and the third reason, just to put some hard numbers on this, last year Highline had thirty-five students who only needed the graduation pathway waiver to graduate. They didn't need any credit waivers. So if you push that forward into this year, that's thirty-five students this year who would be disenfranchised from graduating if this extension isn't granted. Um, I will say for the idea of, um, doing all of our due diligence and all the work that we need to do to ensure that students don't need a pathway. Uh, we started a senior blast in September of this year, working with all of our seniors who, um, were either credit deficient or pathway deficient or both, to make sure that there was sufficient time to get them into the classes that they need. So hopefully we will have very few waivers necessary this year. Every year that waivers have been authorized, we've gone down. And if the board is interested, I can get you our stats on that. Uh, but like I said, that's thirty-five kids who this, you know, if, if this year's requirements were put in place last year, would not have graduated. And we think it's important. We know the value that a high school diploma has on students being able to move, um, forward. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time and the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Appreciate your comments. Stephanie, next, please.
Next, we have, uh, Sherry.
Hi, Sherry Fay from Coopville School District. I'm a school board member and Marin and Holly and all the previous speakers really just, I just echo exactly what they say. So I'm not going to repeat um, what they so eloquently said. Um, I am speaking, um, in favor of this language to continue the pathways and beyond two thousand twenty, you know, beyond the school year would be, would be ideal. Um, but I'll take it one year at a time. I am speaking and representing our re-engagement or open doors programs, which I haven't heard that population necessarily being represented here, um, at the meeting, although I know they've been in attendance. What I have, um, to share with you today is a letter from one of our re-engagement students. Uh, I'm just gonna read exactly what he put down. So quote, "I have been working full-time at Starbucks and have an opportunity to take advantage of their college program." The requirements, of course, include a diploma, which I have completed. He's completed the credits. "I cannot get my official diploma because I have not completed my graduation pathway requirements. I have to ask why this is required when I have proven I have the skills of a high school student and I'm working full-time. What does this test show that I haven't, haven't already proven? I honestly cannot take time off from work to take a test which has no meaning to me. I am supporting myself and need to work as much as possible to buy myself dependable transportation. This doesn't seem fair to me and doesn't prove anything to anyone that I will have a better future. I hope someone can see this and make a change in the requirements so I can move on with my life." So I thought this was the perfect arena for me to, uh, make sure that his words could be seen. What better place than the State Board of Education? I don't, I can't think of anything more powerful to say than to share this letter from, from a student who is living with us and struggling with these requirements. Uh, and it's not, the struggle is not new to re-engagement students. It just kind of came to light and got a, a brighter light shown on what their, uh, barriers are every day. That was, that were present even before COVID. Um, the pathways and the waiver of the pathways were extremely helpful when, during that acute phase where it was just like, yes, we're in isolation. Of course, we ha- you know, we, we can't meet all of these criteria. We have staff who are working diligently to, you know, process and, you know, decide, is this the best path forward? So we're, there's still a lot of sussy now and it's even more work now because it's not as obvious. You know, we're out of isolation, but we're still recovering from all of the effects of COVID. So allowing schools to have this flexibility to provide this equitable opportunity just would really, um, speak to, you know, saying, we hear you, we see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Appreciate your comments. Stephanie, next up?
Sure, um, next we have Dr. Jen Rose.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Jen Rose. I'm the Associate Superintendent for Instruction in Lake Washington School District. I want to thank the board for continuing the extension of this waiver. And again, um, as Sherry said, I won't echo the specifics of what other people have said, but would, would really agree with them. I want to affirm that speaking for Lake Washington and for many districts, we have absolutely met the four conditions, um, for the appropriate use of the emergency waiver. Uh, the stu- our students' ability to complete the requirement was dramatically impeded due to the pandemic. These are the students that were freshmen when the pandemic hit four years ago. And their planning that time in high school, the ninth grade and tenth grade year where they're planning for graduation was significantly impacted, um, by the pandemic. Many of our students, as other speakers have talked about, had recognized that there's, our students' lives were disrupted. And so again, that thoughtful planning, not their academic achievement, but the planning to be able to meet the graduation pathways was impacted. We as a district have demonstrated tremendous good faith effort, as I know all districts have, to support our individual students in meeting the requirements. Um, and we continue to do that. We are working with our students individually to have them meet the requirement for the grad- for the, um, graduation pathway. We also are really, we're ensuring that our students are learning at high levels. And I want to be really clear, this has come up in other meetings that there's a concern that we're asking that students that are not ready for post-secondary world and post-secondary options have this waiver as an option. And that is not what we're asking. Very much in line with what Sherry said, the waiver would help us recognize the learning that our students have done that may not meet the graduation pathways as currently written, but really recognize that our students are ready for post-secondary learning. The board clearly has an interest in that when we look at the performance pathways, um, option for graduation wait, for performance graduation pathways that are coming but are not here. So I want to recognize they are two separate things. But the intent of the graduation pathways is to recognize that students can demonstrate their learning, uh, uh, for the performance based graduation pathways. Students can demonstrate their learning and their readiness in other ways. So the waiver lets us as a district do that, to hold our students accountable to high standards and ensure they're ready for post-secondary. Um, and not have the difficulties of the pandemic for these students that again, started as freshmen, um, hold them back from their goals in post-secondary. That goes to the fourth, to the third point, our students are reasonably expected to graduate this school year. This is the one thing that is holding some of our students back. And we know to the fourth point that they are demonstrating the skills and knowledge indicating preparation. So I want to thank the board for recognizing the learning of our students during this time and recognize, um, and thank the board for, again, as Sherry was saying and Holly was saying, for the flexibility, creativity, um, and commitment to supporting our students. Not in just graduating to graduate, but in, in having ways to demonstrate that they're ready for the post-secondary world as we've gone through this really difficult time. It feels now, you know, people say the pandemic is over and for our students, it's, it's not. And it is in terms of their day-to-day schooling now, but the impact is carrying with them. And we want them to help, we want to help them ensure that the pandemic really is over for them by having them be able to enter into post-secondary world with having that graduation diploma. We really value the learning of our students and we know how essential it is that they're ready for post-secondary. Any option that they want. Almost done. Sorry. The last thing I'll say is we appreciate the timeliness of the board, um, and would really push on that because our students, you know, thinking of an April decision deadline is difficult for our students who are trying to plan for what they do after June. So thank you to the board for considering this, for hearing comments.
Thank you, Dr. Rose. Uh, Stephanie, next person?
Next, we have, um, Ross Thompson.
Good evening, State Board of Education, uh, members. Thank you so much, uh, for your attention to this matter, for holding this special meeting, uh, in a very busy time. Um, I'm Ross Thompson from the Association of Washington School Principals. And I just want to reiterate, uh, lots of, has already been said that I absolutely agree with. Um, if you recall, gosh, I think it was early December, uh, when we last spoke. Um, you know, eighty-five percent of principals we surveyed said, yes, I have students who need, uh, a pathway waiver. So there's a high need, uh, in our, in our larger, um, you know, more traditional high schools. It's typically a small number, a handful of students. Um, in our alternative programs, you will see a much higher percentage of students who are in need of this. And we have some pretty, um, you know, heartbreaking stories from our alternative principals around mental health, substance abuse, hospitalizations, things that have happened to some of the students they're serving. Um, I just want to share with you, you know, this, um, language that you've proposed, um, has been met um, with open arms. I think principals are very receptive to the, um, balance you've struck with. You know, yes, we would have a waiver, but they could not, um, you know, could not also receive a, a, a credit waiver in either English or math depending on what they need for the pathway. So we're pleased with this. We urge you to, um, adopt the emergency rules. Um, there's still, you know, are going to be a handful of students who may not meet it. But, uh, just like, uh, Dr. Rose spoke from Lake Washington, I want to assure you that I truly trust the professional judgment of our educators, our counselors, our principals. Um, they speak about, you know, how do we know kids are going to demonstrate post-secondary preparation? It's through conversations, uh, around the high school beyond plan. It's through having a plan to be, uh, enrolled somewhere, employed somewhere, enlisted somewhere. That's a common one that we, um, hear. And I, I, I truly believe that the, you know, the experiences that these students have had and have shown perseverance and determination to get through it and to meet the credit requirements, um, and maybe fall short of this pathway this year. Uh, we need the waiver and, um, we'll just keep moving forward. But those conversations I know with, uh, the adults and the educators in our buildings, um, they will not allow a student to graduate unless they really know they're ready. So, um, I urge your support for these emergency rules and thank you very much.
Ms. Thompson and Stephanie, I believe our last speaker is ready to go?
Yeah, yeah, yes. Um, Janelle Buchanan.
Hi, I'm Janelle Buchanan. I'm a school counselor and I agree with all of the previous speakers and thank you very much for your time and consideration. The only other piece that I just wanted to, um, mention is that it seems if it's already been determined that the conditions have been met to grant a credit waiver because of the fact the pandemic is affecting this class, then those same conditions should allow to meet the other requirements, um, for graduation. Um, I know there are lots of, um, stories that, you know, kids are impacted by this, um, opportunity to be able to have a waiver. But in, I guess logically, I'm just thinking if the conditions of the pandemic affect it, so it's already been determined that the credits are needed because kids were behind academically and didn't have the same opportunities to earn credit, those same factors, um, influence their ability to be prepared academically to pass a test or meet other academic pathways to meet that waiver. So that's the only other piece I wanted to add.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. I appreciate you making time to chat with us. Um, I believe this, that was our last speaker, Stephanie, is that correct?
It was officially, yes.
Okay, so I, um, noticed in the chat that, um, one of our prior speakers, Mark, I'm sorry, Mark, I, uh, don't have your, your last name, my apologies. Um, had a- asked if he could add something and, uh, given that the, we've, uh, actually gone over time, um, for, for this. And so, Mark, if it's all right with you, what I'd, uh, like to suggest, um, is that, uh, we do have the option of being able to submit your comments in writing, um, and if that would be, uh, okay, if you would be willing to do that. Um, because the board does read all of our public comments also. Uh, and again, that, um, any comments can be submitted to SBE at K one-two dot W A dot U S. Okay, so, um, to wrap up our, um, public comment period, thank you to everyone who made time to, um, share and, uh, present your opinions to the board. Um, and we're sorry that this is, it's a time for you to share with us, but it's, uh, not a time for us to have discussion um, about what you've raised in this, um, portion of the meeting. And also just want to note that opinions expressed by members of the public do not necessarily reflect the board's views on an issue. Um, and we appreciate your engagement and, uh, we will now close this portion of it and move into board discussion, uh, about the item that is before us. Unless there's, uh, anything Randy that, or Linda that you think the board should be aware of before we start entertaining questions from the board.
I, I just, uh, I think Linda was gonna respond to Patty's comment earlier and probably clean up.
We'll take that as the fir- the first one when, when we start. Um, I also do want to note that, um, one of our student representatives has been able to join us. So, um, welcome Costolo. Uh, we're glad you, uh, could join us tonight. So, um, Lind, I'll turn it over to you to respond to Patty's question, which I did not write down, um, but if you could just restate it so that
Yeah, Patty asked about a provision in the emergency waiver rule that allows for students who want to graduate early to use a waiver of pathways. So in past, uh, versions of the emergency waiver, uh, we, we do have that provision and that provision would carry over in the current propo- draft proposed rules. So what it, what it allows for is, is for those students who are accelerated, they've taken all their credit and subject area requirements. But if they haven't completed a pathway, and normally this would be because they, you know, there wasn't a test available at the time they needed to take it or, or some other impediment due to COVID due to the COVID emergency, so they couldn't complete a pathway, then a student who wanted to graduate early could complete all their credit requirements and then als- and then waive the pathway.
So to be clear, uh, cause I have some real concerns about people using pathways to graduate early rather than meeting the full set of graduation requirements. If they're actually following the proposed rules, the only way they could use this waiver to graduate early would be if the opportunity wasn't available due to, uh, COVID. But if it was, for example, they just ran out of time to meet all the requirements and they want to graduate early, that would not qualify them for this option, correct?
Well, I think that it would be the way it's worded now, that the student may graduate early, um, so long as they were not granted an emergency waiver of credit requirements and they met all other state graduation requirements. So, um, so it would be up to the district to say, oh, you you can or cannot have this waiver.
Okay, so, uh, for seniors, they would be able to get both the credit and the pathway waiver. But if somebody's graduating early, they could only do the one.
That's correct.
And in the, in the proposed draft that you will be considering, uh, they could not have both in the same subject area.
But that only applies to seniors because only seniors are allowed to do both.
Right.
Does the board have any questions that they'd like to ask? Um, not seeing any. I'll go, I'll call on Patty again.
So a different subject here. There, I heard, uh, a few times, not just tonight, but previously that, uh, students didn't have the option to meet the pathway to graduate because they didn't have the option to take the test because of, um, uh, different reason amongst the districts, or they didn't have the option to access CTE classes. Uh, and my concern is if they didn't have that option this year, there's no new money, there's new, new programs. What is gonna change that the districts will next year be offering the options to take the SAT or the SBACK or different options? There's, there's, um, there's nothing that's gonna be changing uh, that should allow more options that like money or programs.
So Barry, I think, I think that this gets at the limitations of the waiver. I think we were trying to be really careful about describing circumstances in which the emergency waiver is the appropriate tool and other things that are legitimate concerns about implementation of the pathways that are not things that the waiver is designed or appropriate to address. Um, and so that, um, those issues about offerings, et cetera, uh, if th- those limited offerings is not really what the waiver was designed to address. The, the waiver was trying, designed to address that student who was unable to meet the waiver, uh, and, and meets those criteria that are outlined uh, in terms of eligibility. So the, the district has made a good faith effort, the student has met the requirements, et cetera. So I would put that slide back up, Andy, that has the full criteria. the district has made a good faith effort, the student has met the requirements, et cetera. So I wouldn't put that slide back up. Any that has the full criteria. I don't know who else, I think I can, I can pull that up in just a minute, but um. Linda's beating into it. Awesome. So the, the, these are the conditions that would need to be met um uh in order to be eligible for the waiver. Uh, as I think one of the commenters uh uh pointed out, the, the waiver uh is, is a response to emergency. And I don't think we're debating whether or not uh there's still a need for the waiver in, in general, it's, but it is student specific as well, so.
Can I add one?
Yeah.
Uh, another clarification um is that the proposed rule change that is in the packet materials is only for the section of the rule that addresses the question of what can be waived. But there are other sections of the underlying rule that have been in place since we've been doing this waiver that get at these conditions here. So I'll post a link to the whole rules in case you want to look at the um, the other eligibility. There's a definition of in order to be eligible for this waiver, the criteria for the students, and it touches on the conditions that are shown on screen here as well.
Thank you, Randy, Ja- uh Jaylee and Linda. Um, I'm gonna move to uh Jan Brown.
Thank you, Mary, and greetings to the board. Um, I think it's apparent that there's a great rationale for the graduating class to continue to have um districts working with students, a variety of needs and students, which you heard all about that. And Holly Ferguson from Highline just reminded us something I think we're aware of, but that system change, especially with great interruption like COVID um has a two-year lapse in some ways because staff is less able to uh create those um accessibility and system changes for pathways, at least especially when we talk about the recent legislation last year with math and reading. I just think it, there's some catch-up to do and um I'm just pointing uh, just letting that sit forward a little bit more about the system need and staff that care so deeply about kids and how that implementation and access to pathways is also um perhaps, well, I think it is helped by um, just give my opinion here, a continuation of uh one more year and then let's let us do this. That's what I'm thinking. So I'm just giving that comment. Thank you, Mary. Lovely job leading the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Um, thank you for your input. Um, next is uh Harriet Martin Morris.
Yeah, um, so I, I must confess that uh up until a day or so ago, I was not a fan of extending this waiver. Uh, but then I reflected on the fact that the students that are seniors now were ninth graders when this whole thing began. And so uh in the terms of being fair, reasonable and equitable, I think looking at it for this last year, and from my perspective, this is the last year. Uh, because of the fact that they were kids that started off behind the gate, as it were. It kind of makes sense to make it for this year because that carries through the connection of they started when, as freshmen, when COVID really hit us the hardest. So uh, I am planning on uh supporting this now. I wasn't before. If you'd asked me, like I said a couple of days ago, I would have said no. But then I realized those freshmen from uh two thousand nineteen uh were really hit the hardest. And so this gives them a chance to, in essence, catch, not catch up, but be made whole.
Thank you, Harriet. Jan, I see your hand is still up, but um since I've called on you at um, once I'm gonna go to Ron um and uh come back if you've got an another question. Uh, Ron, go ahead.
Has there been any studies or results seen from the COVID freshman, I call them, the because it's gone off to secondary edu- education since uh uh we've had this in place, has there been any studies on their success rates in, in, in school or trainings past high school?
Randy, do we have access to any data like that or is?
Yeah, so that's, that's a great question, and I think we struggle a little bit with that. We don't have an analysis that looks directly at a student who received a waiver and what the subsequent outcome for that student is. Uh, we have seen um, uh, we saw initially a uh, an increase in the number of students placed into pre-college part of work, and that seems to have come back down um in the most recent year that we have data for. Um, but uh I think there continues to be a lot of questions and concern about uh those students as they progress through.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Dana Riley Black.
I just, uh, just a couple of things to share. I really appreciate the work of the staff and Linda, thank you for your presentation today, the preparation for it. Um, all, all of your, all the work that you all have done have helped me understand the um the nuances of what we're voting on today. And um, in particular, hopefully also helping the public understand what we're voting on today. In addition, what it helped me under, gain more understanding on was um, some of the topics that we as a board really need to explore more in terms of limitations that might be in play with respect to um the pathways, and I look forward to working on that with all of you.
Thank you. Definitely echo um appreciation for all the work staff has done on this and being responsive to board questions uh as this is not the first time we've been um uh talking about this and trying to figure this out. Um, so any other questions from the board? While we're waiting for people to think if they'd like to ask something, um, could we get the um the proposed rules language ready to put back up? Because before we uh, before I'll entertain a motion, I just want to make sure people have had a chance to see the, the language again, and so the public can see it too. So, see Patty has a question?
Yeah, I'm not sure it's much a question, but this is a chance for discussion and maybe Randy, I think I've articulated this earlier. I'm really concerned about what's gonna change for next year. There's, there's no waiver next year, any waiver. I mean, we're done with this and it would, I mean, if we extend this, that'd be a cha- not a waiver, but changing graduation requirements, which is a whole other discussion because you can't do waivers for five years straight because, I mean, just change the graduation requirements if that's what's gonna, you can't have waivers for the next twenty years. So what is going to change that give kids access to the tests or the opportunities or the CTE classes? I understand that they didn't have access to these opportunities two, three, four years ago, but it sounds like they didn't have opportunities to access them this year. And so what is going to change next year that will, that allow them to have the opportunities? And if I'm, if I'm hearing this wrong or if I'm misunderstanding it, I'd really appreciate to be corrected.
Yeah, Patty, I would just say that that question is, is, that did come through in a lot of the comments we received, that same concern that you're expressing is beyond the scope of what we can do in the emergency waiver. Uh, the, the one thing that is changing is that for next year's graduating class, the performance-based pathway will be available um more broadly, and there'll be a handful of districts ready to offer that this year, but um really in a very short window of time, it's not, we don't expect a lot of students to be able to meet those requirements. Uh, that will be more available next year, so I'll have a full year to work on those. Um, and it's a fairly rigorous pathway. But it is different than the other pathways qualitatively, such that many students may benefit from that model versus a tester, of course. Um, that said, I think that also it's, districts are really gonna have to up their game in getting students into these pathways. Um, I think that um, that, you know, a combination of the various course-based, test-based pathways really have to be um uh, and, and I'm not trying to suggest districts have not been doing this work, but it's gonna be a bigger effort for next year.
Yeah, I want to echo that. I mean, the efforts, especially our counselors have gone through to get these kids to the uh destination is incredible. Uh, but there was another thing I felt we needed to um also keep working on continuing to communicate, and I've heard this multiple times. It's like they met all the graduation requirements except for the pathways and that, that um communication needs to be changed. They didn't meet the graduation requirements. Graduation requirements are not credits. Graduation requirements are credits and a pathway and a high school and beyond planned. So credits alone, that's not a diploma. And I'm afraid that um we need to help uh everybody understand that it's all three. It's not just the state board doesn't view them ready to graduate until they have all three. Um, and so I, I hope that we can continue to help clarify that.
Thank you, Patty. Um, additional comments from any member of the board?
Mary, I just want to note that the uh exhibit is now listed with the action item on the agenda and should be available to folks uh to see. And we can share it on screen too, if, if you would like us to do that.
I, I think it'd be helpful if we can pull it up. Again, if, if anyone's um watching or anyone who doesn't have access to that easily, uh, it's short and I think it would be helpful again as a, just a reminder um that before we uh entertain a motion, that this is what it is that we're uh making a motion about. Um, since we don't have all of the language listed as a part of the motion. Um, I, I guess um if, if I'm not see, I'm not seeing any of my colleagues uh with their hand raised at the moment, so I guess um, for me, the, the only comment, it kind of going along with the, the last couple of things that have been said, that's been one of my ponderings is uh, what kinds of things we can be doing or what is in place uh for making sure that the, when everything's done with the performance pathway, it's now accessible, et cetera, uh, that that information is being communicated to our school districts, to our counselors, to parents, so that uh the awareness that this option is now available is as broadly spread and um uh that people are as aware of it as possible. So that's just a, a wondering I have about how uh we might be able to or what vehicles we might have to um assist in, in um supporting that. Okay, so um what we now have on the screen that is underlined is the, the part that we would be looking at um to the motion would be to approve this proposed rule change and which would then, that's not the end of this. It would mean that the next part of this process would start, which would be the schedule for um getting a public comment and input for that rulemaking process, which um Randy and Linda um can give us more information about with the specifics and as we've talked about it. Uh, but for purposes of right now, the, the section that we'd be looking at for a motion would be uh underlined where it says, for students graduating in two thousand twenty-four, the district may not waive a graduation pathway option in English Language Arts or Math if the student received a waiver of credit in the same subject area. Randy, is there any, Orlando, Linda or Jaylee, is there anything you'd like to add before I call for a motion?
Just very briefly, the other change above, which extends it to uh twenty-four, students graduating in twenty twenty-four. Uh, so that's stated there as well, but just to be really clear, this would be available.
Thank you, Randy. My apologies. Okay, so not seeing anyone with their hand up. Um, I will open it up for um and we'll entertain a motion.
Um, I move to approve proposed rules for chapter one eight zero dash one one one. Whack is shown in exhibit A.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dana Riley Black, who's made the motion, and I believe the seconder was Ryan Brought. Is that correct? Right, Ryan, did you make the second?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Yes, Patty?
Just, just one more question. It's one more question. Uh, the all the criteria that we've talked about, you know, how it's used and how it's supposed to be only used if students have access due to COVID and, and not for other things. The oversight of adherence to those rules is actually only done at the local school levy, correct? There's no oversight by um OSPI of the state board, is that correct? So we don't uh, we're relying on our, our counselors to understand the rules completely to make sure they're adhering to them. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would, there's a little nuance. I would just say that the, the school districts actually applied for the authority to grant the waiver and provided assurances that they would meet those criteria. Applied to the state board, I should say.
Is, is there any further discussion? Harriet?
Yeah, I have one more thing. Um, I would hope that as part of this, that districts would report back to us how many students uh were actually served by this change so that we have that information going forward.
Yeah, so.
That's the thing we don't know.
Yeah, waivers are reported by OSPI and um, and would be uh basically any pathway waivers that are reported this year would be as a result of this rule change.
So the districts are required to report that to OSPI?
Yes.
Okay. And is OSPI required to tell us? Let's follow the whole food chain here.
Yeah, yeah, they do share the information best.
Thanks for asking that clarifying question. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will um call for a vote and go through the um, the roll call sheet um and please unmute yourself and uh signify uh how you're, which direction you're, you're, you're planning to go when your name is called. Uh, so Denalda Brantley um is not present. So next, Ryan Brought.
Aye.
Thank you, Ryan. Brooke Brown. Brooke Brown. Um, Brooke, I can see you here, but I can't hear anything. I'm gonna come back to you. Um, Jan Brown.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Jan Brown. Votes aye. Uh, Costolo Gonzalez.
Aye.
Costolo votes aye. Uh, Dr. Angela Griffin is excused. Ron Mayberry.
Aye.
Ron Mayberry votes aye. Harriet Martin Morris.
Aye.
Harriet Martin Morris votes aye. Dr. Paul Petrie.
Aye.
Dr. Paul Petrie votes aye. Dr. Susan Reyes.
Aye.
Dr. Susan Reyes votes aye. Uh Superintendent Chris Reichdahl is not present. Dr. Dana Riley Black.
Aye.
Dr. Dana Riley Black votes aye. Kevin Wang.
Aye.
Kevin Wang votes aye. Patty Wood.
Aye.
Patty Wood votes aye. Bill Kalapa is not present and Mary Furtakis votes aye. So the motion carries and Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Brooke Brown. The thumbs up. Aye, okay. Brooke Brown votes aye with her hand. Thank you, Brooke. Okay, we have a majority, the, the motion has passed. Thank you, everyone, for your participation and your engagement tonight. And we have a couple of things on my sheet, and then I'll order, turn this back over to Randy for any other closing things that we need to do. The next board meeting is scheduled for February fourteenth and fifteenth. That will be an in-person meeting and we'll be officially swearing in our new member, Ron Mayberry. And looking forward to being able to see you in person, Ron, when we do that. Our State Board of Education Day on the Hill is planned for this coming Monday, January fifteenth, Martin Luther King Day, and Jay Lee has been doing a lot of work preparing for that. There, because it's a holiday, there will be quite a few student groups there also, and we'll just cross our fingers for okay weather for everyone who's going to be traveling to Olympia on Monday. Randy, that's all I have. Is there anything further that needs to come before the board?
No, thank you. I just want to note that we will be filing the rules and set a date for the public hearing. Tentatively, we're looking at March thirteenth for that date. And then would anticipate, unless directed otherwise, that the next action would be at the April tenth or eleventh for me.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank my colleagues. I appreciate your grace and patience with me, chairing the, the meeting for the first time and really appreciate your support. Ron?
Freshman question here. Time and place of the next meeting? What time and what is the location of the next meeting?
It is in Olympia and at the Old Capitol Building where I'm sitting now. And it is February fourteen and fifteen. We'll send out more details, but there will be, the meeting is afternoon on the fourteenth and then nine to three on the fifteenth. I think it's scheduled one to five on the fourteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. So there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Been moved by Harriet. Is there a second? Want to do rock, paper, scissors? Okay, second, was that Paul?
Yes.
Okay, so moved by Harriet and seconded by Paul. I think we can do a voice vote with this. All those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your, your hand. I got you, Brooke. Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you again, staff, for getting everything prepared for us. Appreciate everyone. Have a nice evening.